Good evening.
That's what I heard.
If you would, the doors please.
All right.
We have public comments on agenda items before the council meeting. We have two speakers. Pastor Terrence Williams. Terrence, yes, sir. Mr. Reverend Williams, you can speak right there. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. You have three minutes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Hold the mic to you.
Good evening, Mr. Brown.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Walker. Good evening, Mr. Eastley. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Uh-huh.
Good evening, Mr. Bremmitt. Good evening, Mr. Stepp. Good evening, Mr. Mays. I was always taught it's not how long you up is what you say when you get up.
Yes, sir.
So I appreciate you for the three minutes. As a pastor, as a servant citizen of Pine Bluff, we do have an issue in this town. And when we have division, not only in the streets, but when we have division amongst each other, it's something wrong. I know that when we turn around all the time, it's always the members that's going against each other and slandering one another. But I'm a firm believer that if we quit slandering one another and start praying for one another, maybe our town will be better off. And what is beginning to happen is where there is no one accord, there's discord. We see the shooting in the streets and we see the fighting in the street. But when it's fighting amongst the members in the city council, that's something different. And maybe when we look at it, maybe we can change what's on the inside of here, we can change what's on the outside out there. And the concern that I have is we see Sister Davis Jones. We know people are always gonna come up with this and gonna have this about this. But in order to change Pine Bluff, we have to take a look at ourselves because the crime what's going on, this is already predicted. This was written over 2,000 years ago when Solomon said, "There's a generation that curses their father and despises their mother." This is the generation that we living in. When Paul was telling Timothy in the last days, "Say, children, we disobedient." We got disobedient children now. And everything do not start at home with the parents. We have had good parents and raised good children, but when they got old, they just strayed away. And I'm just a firm believer that we need to get on one accord. And if we get on one accord, maybe we can pray our city back together the way that it's supposed to be. Because Pine Bluff has literally failed by the wayside. And it's gonna take us as a whole. I'm not gonna be here long, but before I take my seat, I would just like to leave this with everyone here. If the mayor do what he's supposed to do, and the city council do what they supposed to do, and the people of Jefferson County do what we supposed to do, then God gonna do what we can't do. Let's change Pine Bluff and turn this city back around.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next speaker is Jack Foster. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Mayor, City Council. I'm here this evening to speak to, I think it's number six on the agenda.
That's correct.
It's the no confidence about the leadership in the Pine Bluff Police Department. And I'm looking at some of the wording in here, and it's talking about there's current unrest, dissatisfaction, disgruntled with the current leadership in the department, turnover and resignation of officers. City cannot afford the loss of experienced and qualified officers. Says that the current leadership practice favoritism in decision-making, imposition of discipline, and retaliates against employees. Turmoil in the department is damning the public confidence, the public force, and to the image of the city. Leadership of the department does not demonstrate an openness to members of the city council and the public. And they're saying that there's a change of leadership in the police department is needed to begin a process of renewal in the department to help it accomplish this mission of crime prevention and the apprehension of offenders and to restore public confidence in the leadership. Then it goes on to the next page, and what this resolution is asking is urging the mayor to replace the leadership forthwith. What I want to speak to is this, is that first of all, this is just a resolution, it has no teeth in it. You have already qualified the fact that the council cannot terminate the chief. So we need to move on. Now, if it's about getting rid of the chief, and I think that's where this is headed, I think what you need to do, and you can confer with the city attorney on this, if you want her gone, what you do, you amend the budget, reduce the salary, which I think is legal. Otherwise, if this resolution passes eight to nothing, the mayor is not going to remove her. So if you want her gone, what you do, you put legislation on the table that will see to it that she's gone. Otherwise, to me, this is nothing more than pussyfooting and a publicity stunt because of the fact that you're not going to accomplish what you, the means that you're looking for, the end that you're looking for. What I said to this council is, tonight when it comes to this vote on no confidence, my recommendation is everybody vote against it. And get the sponsor legislation to bring back something with some teeth in it, if that's what you want to do. Otherwise, she's going to be there until the mayor decide that she leaves. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. That's it, I think. Let me say good evening to all.
Good evening.
And welcome to the Pine Bluff City Council meeting of May 7th, 2012. I'll call this meeting to order. We have a roll call, please, Mrs. Whitfield.
Alderman Hoke, Alderman Bremmitt.
Here.
Alderman Eastley.
Here.
Alderman Stepp.
Here.
Alderman Walker, presence.
Alderman Boyd.
Here.
Alderman Brown.
Here.
Alderman Mays.
Here.
All righty. Each of you have a copy of the minutes from April 16th.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the minutes from April 16th, 2012. All in favor of that motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Let me also let each council member and citizens know that our senior councilperson, Ms. Irene Holcomb, is out because she was having surgery today, and I was informed by the family that the surgery was very successful, and she's recuperating, doing fine.
Thank you.
Sure thing. All righty. Maybe we start with the committee reports. Mr. Bremmitt, you're gonna fill in for Alderman Holcomb, chairperson of...
Orders and Resolutions Committee met prior to the meeting, and we're gonna take the following action. We will read number one through five one time and refer them to committee. We will, of course, finish the resolutions six, seven, and eight, and it was recommended that we read titles only. So I'd make a motion that we read titles only.
It's been moved and properly seconded that titles only of the files, orders, and resolutions be read only. Floor is open for discussion.
Since we're all going to committee, we just thought we'd just read the title.
Okay.
And then come back next time.
That's fine. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The motion carries seven zero.
That concludes the report, sir.
Thank you, sir. If you would, just take us into Ways and Means, Mr. Bremmitt.
Yes, sir. The Ways and Means Committee met, and we have one budget adjustment that was in your packet. It's a grant of, from Arkansas Growth Improvement Funds received from Southeast Arkansas Economic Development for Lake Saracen projects. Funds will be used for signage around the lake. It's a $15,000 grant. The purpose of this adjustment is to put in place the necessary mechanism to be able to accept the funds and disperse the funds. So I move we accept this budget adjustment.
It's been moved and properly seconded that a budget adjustment in the amount of $15,000 to receive a Arkansas General Improvement Funds grant from the Southeast Arkansas Economic Development for the Lake Saracen project. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The motion carries seven zero.
Mayor, I move that the bills that the city owes be paid.
It's been moved and properly seconded that the bills of the city be paid. All in favor of that motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Right, the motion carries seven zero.
And that concludes Ways and Means report.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Walker, Economic and Community Development, please, ma'am.
No report, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Alderman Mays.
Sir, ma'am.
Public Health and Welfare.
We didn't have a meeting, but a lot of citizens are calling about tall grass in their neighborhoods and around their houses. You can call the office, figure on itself, and our inspection department at 730-2020. If you have any questions about the tall grass in the neighborhood that's not being cut, that's 730-2020.
All right, thank you, sir. Alderman Boyd, Public Works.
No report, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Mr. Stepp's Department of Development and Planning.
No report, ma'am.
Traffic and Aviation, Alderman Brown.
No report, Mr. Ma'am. However, Mr. Hale is here. I'm gonna give us a report in there. Airport.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, if you'd allow me a few minutes, I'd like to give you all an update on Greder Field. Terminal building project is progressing well, has reached a 50% completion. The interior is taking shape, and now you can see the layout of the building. The exterior work also is well underway. Mission staff were all very anxious to see the finished product. Like I said, shaping up very nicely once completed. I believe you all will agree, hopefully, the Pine Bluff will have a very nice terminal building and a worthy representation of our city to all of our many visitors. Contractually, the project completion date is July the 14th of this year. The contractor and architect are hopeful to beat the date, but they will not be completed by the Black Pilots of America flying, which is May 24th through the 27th. Provisions will be made to accommodate the event as well as possible. In other news, the Pine Bluff Aviation Commission is planning a taxiway rehabilitation project this summer. When the project planning was started, the FAA funding for their airport improvement plan, those grants were at 95.5 as it has been for the years past. The FAA has been, along with other governmental agencies, has been operating on continued resolution for the last several years. They finally got a bill passed this year, and part of that bill, unfortunately, they changed the grants from 95.5 to 90.10. At this time, the Arkansas Department of Aeronautics, just to give you a brief history, the grants before were 95.5, and the State Aeronautic Commission covered the other 5%. So basically, all those grants were 100% paid. The Arkansas Department of Aeronautics, the ADA, they're looking at all of the options to see how they can fund this. Prior to the IP grants being at 95.5, they were at 90.10. And what they did at that time, of course, the feds paid for 90%, the state paid for 5%, and the local cities had to pay the other 5%. They're considering all those options now. They'll make a decision in July. I'll report back to you on what that is. So we may have to revisit this. This is a project that we certainly wish to complete.
Yes, sir. Mr. Hale, we are not grandfathered in since we were given the grant prior to?
No. No, all airports, it's across the board. It's across the board.
They had made the commitment, they had made the commitment for an 85% grant, right?
No.
Was it?
They just, they have not. The grant has not been approved. We've put all of the, all the wheels in motion, but it has not been, the grants are approved on actual bids, and we haven't started the bidding process yet. We're trying to find out how, how the money's going to be. So we don't want to commit to anything at this time.
So...
Yes, sir.
So previously, it was 95.5.
Yes.
And eventually, it was really 100%.
Right.
That's correct.
So now it's 90.10?
Yes.
Will we still get that 5% that we were getting already?
The Arkansas Department of Aeronautics will be debating that at their commission meeting in July. Myself and, there's 91 public airports in the state of Arkansas. There's two major carriers, there's two other support carrier airports. That's only four out of those 91 that are going to get proper funding. The rest of us, which is obviously the majority, are hoping that the Arkansas Department of Aeronautics will help us out. So again, I'll have to report back on what that commission's decision is. I will keep you informed. Last, I'll be quick about this. We're pleased to announce that the Black Pilots of America will host their Operation Skyhook at Greder Field for the 16th consecutive time. The flying dates, as mentioned before, May 24th through the 27th. Everybody try to attend, that is Memorial Day holiday.
Does that start on Thursday?
Yes, sir. Thursday evening is the safety meeting for the pilots. Really, the event is Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So if your schedule permits, you're in town for the holiday weekend, please come out to Greder Field if you have any youth. That's a big part of the BPA's organization, is introducing youth to aviation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. Thank you.
That concludes...
That's it, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have the administration. Alderman Eastley.
No report, ma'am.
All right.
I would like to, the non-candidate people that are running candidacy's right now, that remember that you're not supposed to place signs in public right of way. And we've got two intersections out in our neighborhood, and always people stick them in the right of way, either that or they get them over on the people's property. And as of now, the five candidacy's that are out there in those areas have not, they don't have permission to be in those areas, so I would suggest that they had moved those, or we get the street department move them, or we're gonna have a neighborhood cleanup, and we're gonna remove them.
Okay. To a reminder to all the candidates in the May 22nd primaries, there will be a sweep by the Pine Bluff Street Department concerning signs that are in the right of way. So if you know a candidate's sign or a candidate, let them know that their signs cannot be in the right of way. And this week, the Pine Bluff Street Department will make a sweep to take them out of the right of way. Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right, public safety, you're gonna give, who's...
Okay. Public Safety Committee met this afternoon, and first on the agenda was the Police Department, and they presented us with their crime statistics and compared from last year to this year and year-to-date. Reported crimes are down a total of 9.95%. There's a significant decrease in crimes in areas like burglary, burglary, motor vehicle theft, and rape and attempted rape is down significantly. That's a good report. We appreciate them giving us that report. The next one is from the Fire Department, and again, the reported calls are down 61 and, for the month. And they went through and talked about all the different training programs they've been doing during this time, and fire prevention activities. And they also have their Citizens' Fire Academy going right now, with a graduation to be scheduled on Thursday, June the 7th. Will be the graduation for the first of the Citizens' Fire Academy graduates. We also had a report from District Court Division Two showing the monies that were collected, and a copy of this is available in the clerk's office if anybody would like to have one. Reverend Turner talked about the effort that he, through ICVR, has been making to obtain funds through Safe Neighborhood Money and Grants to help possibly with a Shot Spotter Technology acquisition. He's still working through the U.S. Attorney's Office. That concludes the public safety report.
Okay, sir. One other thing I'd like to ask Chief of Fire and discuss with him, if you would, at our next council meeting, under the Public Safety Committee report, we'd like for you to give a report concerning the arsonists that have taken, a team that's been pulled together, and what it consists of and things of that nature, sir. Thank you.
Mayor, just for the record, I sent you an email asking you for answers to those questions, or you've got those for me tonight or not?
Mr. Bremmitt, I absolutely got an answer for you. And that answer is similar to the answer that I provided you with last time. And also, the Municipal Attorney provided you with an answer. And I'll read his statement to you in his email. Your email to me. Mayor, I talked to Mr. Hayes with the Municipal League, and he basically told me that you did not have to answer any questions from me, and that the chief answered to you, and only you. And only you are responsible to answer, she was only responsible to answer to me. You said you told him there was nothing to stop you from answering.
Asking the question.
From asking, I'm sorry, from asking the questions. And if you want to ask these questions and waste these citizens' time, waste your time, it works this committee's time. Every week, I can tell you right now, without a shadow of a doubt, the answer's gonna be the same. I'm not answering any questions from you because of what legal device, legal advice has provided to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. But let me also just share with you some things, Mr. Bremmitt, that I think citizens have informed me of and discussed with me, and I'm just surprised that it hadn't really registered with you, sir. Citizens say they are proud of the Pine Bluff Police Department because they've seen that women and men worked exceptionally hard over the last two years. And some citizens have basically, citizens have basically identified some accomplishments of the police department. So when they told me some, I went and asked the command staff for the things that have been accomplished under the chief. And they are as follows, sir. There's been a reorganization of the divisions within the police department where they function much more effectively and efficiently, cost-effectively and efficiently. The Institute of the 12-Hour Shift has placed three times as many officers out on patrol. And citizens of every walk tell me that they see their neighborhoods being patrolled much more than they ever have seen before. There's been a tremendous reduction in overtime from the Support Service Division. And this was basically achieved by the implementation of the 12-hour shift, as well as close overview of the payroll for overtime. It was determined that personnel was receiving overtime when sick or vacation was taken with regular work hours. That's been eliminated. Our 2009 Police Department's budget for overtime was $325,000. That amount, that amount in our last budget, 2012, was reduced to $120,000. That's a 63% reduction in overtime. We've had a tremendous improvement in recruitment, which allowed our department to take advantage of the Department of Justice COPS grant. We've hired, if I'm not mistaken, I think, is it six officers through the COPS grant, chief, or?
Seven.
Seven new officers through the COPS grant, sir. We haven't had a COPS grant. No, we haven't had one since, basically, I think, the year during the Clinton administration. We've implemented 13 new cameras across this city for surveillance at major strategic areas. We have maintained full staffing of 151 officers since September 2011. That's something that I know when I got here, we barely could keep 120 officers. We've started the Pay Camp, which is the Police and Youth Initiative. We've started a Fall Festival for Halloween to get children involved with our law enforcement officials. We placed the DARE Initiative back in the schools. We've increased the number of school resource officers, and believe me, the school districts truly appreciate that. That's been a Texas tip initiative started by the police department. We promoted 22 new officers. We've increased the number of female officers. We've created a cold case unit. Sent eight detectives for advanced training in read interviewing and interrogatory. There's been three new positions created in the police department, Assistant Chief and two captains. There's been an increase in the number of females and minorities in the police department. We've obtained two highly valued JAG grants in the last two years. One came through the program, the stimulus program, that came after the stimulus program, rather. We've implemented the AmeriCorps program, where we have approximately eight young people working and having them communicate with our senior citizens and our youth throughout the community. Officers accountability is greatly enhanced through the Comstat program. We increased the awareness of domestic violence. A tremendous focus has been put on domestic violence and domestic abuse in order that we can minimize crime associated from that. There's numerous other things I got here, but the key point is that crime for the last eight months, I think each one of you have a statistic where the first four months of this year, there's been a reduction each month in crime. The overall reduction year-to-date through April 30th was 9.95%, right, Mr. Bremmitt?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And the last four months of last year has been reduced, September, October, November, December. So we've had eight straight months of crime reduction. We've increased accountability for false alarms coming from fire, and fire as well as burglary alarms. We've reestablished the Explore Youth Program in the police department. We've established, the police department, that is, a ministerial advisory group. We've improved the fleet of vehicles throughout the department, and we have many more vehicles than we've ever had. The number of females within the police force has increased by 38% over the last two years. We've created the Crime Suppression Unit, a unit that helps detectives and the patrol suppress crimes in areas where crime might be increasing. We've reestablished the Bike Unit. You know, these are some things, there are others that I've written down here and people have given me too, that shows what our police department...
What did I come from, Police Department?
Yeah, come from the Police Department, yeah. These are things, I think, that shows that leadership is obviously working.
I don't have it, I don't have one of those, sir. And I have supported everyone as a United States Union as far as budgeting and financing and saw them through the city. The only thing that I've been asking for is I answered about four questions. That's all, it has nothing to do with the other.
Okay, well, I think from a legal perspective, you've gotten answers, probably not the one you want.
No, I'm not getting any.
Yes, you have. I think Mark Hayes told you exactly what the answer is from me, as well as from him from a legal perspective.
He told me you didn't have to answer, and that's the end.
Well, that's an answer. That's an answer. So I think this city and this mayor has confidence in the leadership within the police department. Thank you.
Mayor Reed, do you mind if I make a statement?
Go right ahead, ma'am.
In reference to the cold case, you know, I think that it's an insult to say that there has been a cold case established when Mrs. Hall cannot get any information or anybody working on the disappearance of her daughter. And they, the lead detective that was working with her, or working on this case, he was removed from the case. And, and so therefore, the cold case has died. You know, the lady needs some answers. She needs someone to be concerned about her daughter, the same as any of us would want, someone to be concerned about our loved one. And, and that is not true, what, this cold case stuff is not working.
Now, being true and not working are two separate and distinct things. Now, which one are you saying?
Both.
Okay, well, let me assure you. Let me assure you, assure the citizens of this community.
Okay, well, I'll ask you, I'll ask you this. Has she given Mrs. Hall a update on her daughter's case?
I can't speak for what the police department has...
When she's there, can she?
This is an ongoing investigation. I don't think that we need to be sharing what's happening in an ongoing investigation in the public, ma'am. But I can assure you that the police department is focusing on each and every cold case that's been identified within the city at this particular point in time. at this particular point in time.
Well, I don't see anything wrong with her saying whether she have talked to Mrs. Hall and about what is happening with the case for her daughter. She, you know, she the one brought it up in his resume of her, about all these wonderful things she's doing. So it's just a matter of.
Not a resume, ma'am. And let me, let me say one thing to you.
Giving Mrs. Hall some information about her daughter. I'm not saying give it to me, give it to the council, but give it to Mrs. Hall.
Let me assure you, I will follow up on that.
Thank you.
If it hadn't been done, I will make sure that it's done immediately.
Thank you.
Sure that the police department has no problem
Thank you.
in communicating with Mrs. Hall and her family. All right, thank you. All righty. Mr. Brummett, you're replacing Mrs. Hockem tonight. So if you would, take us on to propose ordinances and resolutions.
Okay, we have an ordinance to close a portion of the alley located in Block 11 of D-WM Harding, S slash D of Block 8-11 between 11th and Martin Avenue, east of Walnut Street, up for the first reading.
An ordinance to close a portion of the alley located in Block 11 of D-WM Harding, subdivision of Blocks 8 through 11.
Okay, we'll put it on the calendar and send it to the Development Planning Committee. The next one is an ordinance adopting amendments to the Police and Procedures Manual of the Pine Bluff Police Department and declaring emergency up for the first reading.
An ordinance amending an ordinance granting an exclusive ambulance franchise up for the first reading. An ordinance amending an ordinance granting an exclusive ambulance franchise.
Now, that's up for the first reading?
Yes, sir.
This has been modified from the previous ones that we had?
This is the first reading of this, for some of us.
All right, so that will go to the committee as well?
Yes, sir. It'll go to Public Safety Committee as well.
All right, thank you.
The next one is an ordinance amending Part C of the Regulations and Policies of the City of Pine Bluff respecting alcohol and drug testing, up for the first reading.
An ordinance amending Part C of the Regulations and Policies of the City of Pine Bluff respecting alcohol and drug use testing.
This one also would go to.
Administration.
Well, it deals with public safety employees, but I suppose we could maybe have a combined meeting of administrators, same people on both committees.
Good. That'd work.
And we'll discuss it and make a recommendation to the council. The next one is an ordinance amending Article 5, Section 19-131 and 19-137 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, respecting the organization of the review committee charged with reviewing the suspension, demotion, and rank and pay or dismissal of a firefighter or a police officer, up for the first reading.
An ordinance amending Article 5, Sections 19-131 and 19-137 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, respecting the organization of the review committee charged with reviewing the suspension, demotion, and rank and pay or dismissal of a firefighter or police officer.
That one also will be placed on the calendar and will be sent to the Public Safety Committee for review. Now we have a resolution expressing no confidence in the current leadership of the Pine Bluff Police Department.
A resolution expressing no confidence in the current leadership of the Pine Bluff Police Department.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in property second at a resolution expressing no confidence in the current leadership of the Pine Bluff Police Department.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in property second at a resolution expressing no confidence in the current leadership of the Pine Bluff Police Department. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none?
I'll speak, sir.
Go ahead, sir.
Chief Brenda Jones and I had a talk after the last vote that we had on this, the no-confidence vote. She, we talked, and she told me that she would do her best to do a better job in talking to her officers, uniform and non-uniform. You know, I agree with her, and I consider to have compassion at this time because I voted for it the last time. She said that she needed more time to continue to help our city reduce crime and help clean up our image. You know, I gave her my word. Now, to you other aldermen and other, all the women, except Ms. Hockem, you know, absence, the people in your wards are calling me because you all are not doing a good job calling your constituents back. My workload as alderman has doubled. And we need to take care of these issues at this time. I'm not complaining because my prayer for the fourth ward alderman was answered. All I'm saying is just the people in your wards, if you would, call them back. They are depending on us to help them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Okay. Are there any other comments? I think I've given you my position regarding the administration of the police department and the dedicated people that we have and the leadership that's been provided. Crime is down in this community. Crime will continue to be down in this community. We are asking our law enforcement officials to continue to do the job that the citizens of this community require of them and ask of them. So I'm in support of the chief. I'm in support of her command staff and the job that they're doing. And I don't see any legitimate reasons to have a no-confident vote. So are there any other comments?
Well, mayor, I will speak because I, as well as some of the other council members.
You brought the registration forth, ma'am.
I did. Yes, I did.
Okay, so speak for you.
Okay, I'm speaking for me.
Speak for you.
That, the people that come to me, and they are afraid of losing their jobs, they can't, they can't speak up. And people are being moved at their whim, you know, however she feels that they. And I'm not trying to tell her how to run her police department, but, or run this police department. But anytime they are back to Mrs. Hall, if you have detectives that is working on a case to solve it, and the lead detective is moved after he would not come before this council and say he did something that he did not do. She asks him to make a statement to the council that he was taking responsibility for something that he would not do.
Does that have anything to do with the Hall case, ma'am?
It does. It does. And he, because he's the lead detective on it. And he was moved.
She asked him to come to the detective, come to the council?
Yes.
And make a statement regarding?
The hats and the policies.
Hats and policy has nothing to do with the Hall situation.
It does. It all gets back to the same thing.
I don't see the correlation between a change of a hat and uniform.
I understand you wouldn't.
Okay, but, you know, it's up to you to make that correlation.
No, it's really not up to me. It's up to her.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, let me say something.
Yes.
I think that what needs to happen, I think the chief and our officers, especially our command staff, I think they need to have some communication between them because they're the leadership of that department. And apparently there are some differences between them. And I, it's incumbent upon that department and the leadership that they all get together and work out whatever differences that they have as far as their communication. And I think that's where a lot of the problem is gonna lie. And, and some of the staff will go and speak some things. But I'm, my question is, I don't know if they're speaking them to her. And I think that's what has to happen, that they have to make their concern known to the chief. And, and if, you know, you're talking about you're fearful that you're gonna lose your job, but then when you go in to talk, if they go in a group, take somebody with you in there to discuss your situation. And I think that once we can do that, I think that you're gonna have greater results than what we're having at this point.
Okay. Chief, would you like to speak to that matter, ma'am?
First of all, I want to say, thank you for letting me present my side of the story, pretty much. I don't know where this is coming from that I, that, is that better?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know where it's coming from that my officers are fearful of me. I cannot take somebody's job without cause. There has to be cause for me to take somebody's job. You know, if this was a communist company, a country, maybe I could do that. But we live in the good old United States, and there's no way I can do anything like that. There has to be a cause. We live in a state that we have to have a cause of action. So if there's a cause of action, then there is a reason for me doing discipline. But no way in this world would I discipline anybody without having a cause to. Second of all, speaking with Mr. Step says, we have staff meeting every week. We voice our concerns with one of the prospective divisions. And at that time, these division heads express to me the changes or things they want to have done. For his retaliation, I've never done that to anybody. Because there are several times, you're speaking on Mr., you're speaking on Mr. Rawlinson, there are several times that we could have did issues when there was issues that came about that we just didn't take any action on, that we handled within-house. But as there's no way I would do anything like that. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have about the Hall case. The Hall case, we have met with Ms. Hall. We met Ms. Hall for two and a half hours and discussed intricate details that we had located. So the, for Detective Rawlinson's being moved from a case, let me ask you something. If you were running a bank, and there's customer service area, and there's a person that handles.
Sorry, that's a personnel issue. You don't need to be discussing the personnel issue here.
But I just, I just want to, it's not a personnel issue, but what I'm just saying about the changes. If you move somebody, you're trying to tell me that just because you move, make changes, that that's not gonna be effective? Well, I hate to say that if we didn't change the council or everything else, we had to keep it remaining the same, you're trying to say it wouldn't be effective. That is not what this world is about. It's about change. And a lot of times, my daddy always told me, only people that like change are babies because they want the diaper changed. So change creates some good things, change creates some bad things. We just talked about overtime being reduced 63%. And part of that overtime came from issues that where things were not done correctly. Now, if I take that much money out of somebody's pocket, wouldn't they be a little upset with you? Yes, they would.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, may I ask a question? So are you saying that there is someone that is working on the Hall case?
Do you want me to let the head of investigations come and answer that? Because that's why I had division heads.
This is a situation with a ongoing investigation.
I just asked you the question.
I just answered the question, Ms. Walker. I just told you that we talked for two and, for two and a half hours.
I just asked you the question.
This is about a particular.
But I just asked you a question. Is there someone working on the case? That's all I ask.
All right.
I just asked, is there someone working on the case?
There is always someone working on every case, Ms. Walker. There is someone working on every case. Every case in this city is always somebody assigned a detective. Every case.
Well.
Not just the Hall case. I don't show preferential treatment. Every case there's somebody working on.
Mayor Reedus, may I ask?
Thank you, chief.
May I ask one more question?
We're gonna bring this to a head for a vote at this particular time.
This is concerning something else. I wanted to know about.
Why don't you let us vote then if it's concerning something else? You know, we got, we got a motion on the floor, and we need to deal with it.
Okay.
Mayor, let her finish.
No, this is regarding something else, sir. We got a motion on the floor. That's what I say. Let's vote on this motion, and Ms. Walker, you can ask what you like. Absolutely.
I have some more discussion, too.
Yeah, okay, is it regarding this particular situation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. No, that, sir, this, this, we have a motion on the floor.
I understand it's about the chief, sir.
Yes.
May I speak?
Yes.
Thank you. Saturday night, in the fourth ward, we had this issue. And we've had it for a while. Officer Moya been dealing with it. And I text chief, Chief Jones, and some evil out there just terrorizing the neighborhood, just a nuisance. And my main issue is, this was going on first. Well, the citizens. And the citizens, these are working people out there. These people disturbing the neighborhood. I text the chief. Chief, I told you what the problem was. People called me before he left that evening. Chief, would you shut it down? I mean, that's, that's the concern that we need to work out on this council. And everybody has to come together and iron out any other issues. But the people in the neighborhood was texting me back saying, "Thank you." And I text the chief back and told them.
Mr. Brown.
Just want to let y'all know, we need to focus back on the citizens.
So are you saying your issue is more important than?
No, I'm not. I didn't say that. I'm just saying it all goes hand in hand, Ms. Walker. It all goes hand in hand. I'm just saying, I've talked with her. I'm just saying, I voted no last, for it last time. And just, back in your hands, mayor.
Thank you.
But no issue is important. All, everything's important to me. Even just getting the trash can, top of somebody's trash can is important to me.
Public, yes, sir.
The only thing that I can say about it in the last six months, I've had more complaints from more officers. Officers that's been on here over through at least six police chiefs. I've, I've never had the number of complaints. And they're not coming from one particular area. It's coming from both sides. It's coming from females, it's coming from males, it's coming from blacks. It's coming from the white side. It's coming from everywhere. I have not had anybody step up and tell me that they think that things are going well. Now, that's just the facts. I don't know who, I don't know who speaks to you, but the people that've talked to me, that's what I get on.
I probably speak with them much more than you do, sir. Because I run the day-to-day operations, and I interface with the police officers on a daily basis. No doubt about it. Mr. Brown, did you check to see who Mr. Brown is, sir?
And Ms. Walker, this is an important issue to me, too. It really is.
Public safety is what municipal governments were chartered behind. Public safety is extremely important to each and every one of us on this council and each and every citizen in this community. Public safety is where we are focusing the majority of our resources and the majority of our time. So we will continue to do that. No doubt about that. So if we bring this to a close, there's a motion on the floor. All in favor of that motion, let it be known by, we're gonna have a roll call.
Alderman Brummett? Alderman Easterly?
Aye.
Alderman Step?
No.
Alderman Walker?
Aye.
Alderman Boy?
No.
Alderman Brown?
No.
Alderman May?
No.
The motion fails for lack of a fifth vote. Thank you. We move on, sir, to the next.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for a grant from Delta Regional Authority and appointing him to do all acts necessary to complete the application and administer the grant.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for a grant from Delta Regional Authority and appointing him to do all acts necessary to complete the application and administer the grant.
Move for adoption.
Second, can you say?
It's moved in property second at a resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for a grant from the Delta Regional Authority and appoint him to do all acts necessary to complete the application and administer the grant. Mr. Sampson. You give everybody correct copy? Okay, the, the copy that you have, we have corrected that copy.
May I have a question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Sampson. Yes. Go ahead, and you ask the question.
The original resolution from the amended one in Section 3. Can you explain that?
I think Mr. Childers might be the better person to explain the changes, sir, the dramatic changes that were made in Section 3.
Well, actually, actually, Mr. Sampson probably can explain it better because it really, the only, there were some writers errors in Number 3, but the actual details that are set forth there, Mr. Sampson can explain it better than I can.
Okay.
Section 3 of the resolution addresses the project location. Being along University Drive, it also identifies funding that has been allocated to go towards the project to the sum of $356,000. to the sum of $356,000 that has been set aside by the, to the Arkansas Highway and Transportation Department. Also indicates that the Arkansas Highway and Transportation Department is pledging dollars to go towards the project as well, to the tune of $1,282,775. That's the summary of that particular section.
The reason I ask because in the first resolution, it wasn't there. I think that was the only thing that was added in.
Yeah, there was a couple of modifications made to that as well, sir, but that, they had, and changes to the resolution, they have left out a couple of sentences. Are there any other questions, Mr. Sampson?
I got some questions. I, I guess my concern is, is that, that you've been the designee of it, is Mr. Sampson going to be working with this, or are you going to be the one designated to handle this, the grant application itself?
It'll be handled through, actually, we, we are completing the grant, we have completed the grant, and it was handled through Community and Economic Development. So, but I think Delta Regional Authority requires the chief executive to be the person to sign off on it and bring it forth. Is that not right, Mr. Sampson?
Yes, sir, that's making reference to the executive level to be able to sign the application and to administer the application process from the city's appointee level. That, that doesn't happen in, within the department. That's typically, that's typical to how it's always done, as far as who has the authorization to sign the grant application and so forth.
Mr. Stepp, I ask the same question, because this is the first time I've ever seen it dealt with in this sentence. Yeah.
That's, that's something that they require.
In section, in section one, would you read that and respond to that?
That the mayor, that Mayor Carl Reedus Jr. be and is hereby designated and appointed to perform on behalf of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, and has the authority to make those acts and assume any and all duties in dealing with the grant with DRA for the fiscal year 2012 federal funding cycle.
So, community development is not really mentioned in here at all?
Well, the, the application comes from the city of Pine Bluff as, in general, and it's not a departmental application, it's really coming from the city of Pine Bluff, and we basically were just appointed to help try to put it together. The fact is, is that the chief administrator of the city has to be the designated appointee to handle authorization of signing documents and communicating back and forth with the agency. And so they just wanted to have a resolution on file indicating that that step has been taken care of, and that he has authorization to sign the documents, the application.
Okay, who, who has the authorization now?
That the chief administrator, meaning the mayor, has authorization to sign the application and, and the documents that, that they may require to be signed associated with the application.
So, after this is done, really, the council, our community development will not have any input or authorization at all, right?
Now, Ms. Walker, we have completed the grant application, and the work was done by regional planning, street department, and community development, as well as UAPB's Economic Development-
Southeast Arkansas-
And Southeast Arkansas Economic Development Group. So they all have participated in providing us with resources and information or data to complete the grant.
Okay, so the grant has been completed and accepted and everything, right?
No, no, we didn't say it was accepted.
Okay.
They, they will, I don't know when they will let us know whether they accept the grant or approve the grant, if that's what you're saying.
But, yeah, my concern is that it's not handled through a department, because community development would be the one that was partly in charge of getting the grant, and I don't understand why it's not handled through the community development, along with the mayor signing off, but in, instead of complete authority to the mayor for signing everything.
One of the, one of the requirements for the Delta Regional Authority is they request that communities that apply for assistance go through what's called the planning districts. Planning districts, in our case, is Southeast Arkansas Economic Development District. So they will be the appointee responsible for pretty much administering the application, submitting the documents to the mayor, whatever needs to be signed off on and approved for the application, and then even after, if we were approved for the funding, they will, on behalf of the Delta Regional Authority, administer the application on, on the, all the project phases.
But see, that's not, if we had had an attachment to this, of explaining what they require, because the only project that this is, is, from my understanding, is the widening of University Drive, right?
Yes, ma'am, it's dealing with the underground utilities for University Drive.
You know, I agree with Alderman Walker, because I studied, in my study last night before the council, you added two lines in there, and in the first copy, University Drive wasn't there, and you added another $50,000 in here versus the $56,022. And what is it, the funds are on deposit with the Arkansas Highway deposit and not yet been expended. In that last paragraph, you added two lines in section three. Okay, explain that. We just got this here today when we first came in, and it was amended to.
I may be able, if it's okay, I may be able to address something about it. If you look at your original copy, in section three-
Can you talk to the mic, Joe?
Sorry. If you look at your original copy at section three on page two, you'll notice that it starts out that the city of Pine Bluff AR, Arcan, there's, that means there was an error in the typing there, because if you go down two lines, you'll see where it picks up SAS for the completion of that sentence. So that was filed up. The other information was just provided to make it more clear about the composition of these, of these funds. At the time this was prepared, because it was prepared just before the deadline on Wednesday, we weren't quite aware what the project itself was, and that was learned today, so we were able to put that in section three, that this was specific to the University Drive project. And then they, there was an itemization of the $356,000 and what it consisted of, the $250 General, $56 Community Development Block Grant, and $50 Arkansas Economic Development. And the, Ms. Walker, Lori Walkers from Community Development also emphasized to me that it would be important to specify that this money had not been expended and was in the hands of the Highway Department so that the, the folks at the Delta Regional Authority would understand that was the situation. Apparently, that does have some impact on their review of our grant, to know that we haven't gotten the money back from the Highway Department, that it's in their hands, and so that, that was why that was inserted. Apparently, it's important for their review that they'd be made aware of that. And the last sentence is strictly a statement of fact, that's, the Highway Department is just going to, that's what their estimate is for the, their contribution to the cost of the project.
Any other questions?
Just go to the video, is it going to be just a whole? Can, can he go to the video?
This is a resolution, sir.
I understand.
We, we, okay, but, well, Mr. Mayor, we've, we've kind of dealt with this particular project, you know, probably since the latter part of last year. All we're trying to do is, is, is apply for additional funds that the Delta Regional Authority could help support on this project of the widening of University Drive and helping us to bury the utilities.
I understand, it just wasn't the first.
Mr. Mayor, uh-
I understand, it just, I lost the wording when I read it.
I would like to bring it to the attention that the application does have, it's time sensitive, and it needs to be approved tonight so that we could be able to move forward with the next step and getting it completed in order for it to be submitted according to their schedule. So it's not an open application process.
So in other words, if this is not passed tonight, well, then we will lose the grant, right?
Well, we hadn't gotten the grant.
No, but he's, he, no, I know that, but he's saying that, uh-
No, he says it's just time sensitive.
It's time sensitive, is what I'm saying.
So you have to apply by when?
We have to apply by the deadline for applications, um-
May 15th.
May, May 29th.
And then it was already dated for today at this hour.
That's the date of this meeting.
I understand.
Right.
Well, the amount of money that you, that you're applying for and what is pledged by the Highway Department, is that enough money for the total project?
At, at this point, that's the estimates that have been given to us by the Highway Department and the other contractors that will be involved with it, which will be Entergy Arkansas, yes, as to those are the costs that have been associated with the project.
So, so this amount of money would complete the project?
As far as we know.
As far as we know at this point.
Hearing no additional questions, all in favor of the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The motion carries seven zero.
May we have a resolution providing for placement of costs or correcting certain nuisance, nuisances on tax books as delinquent taxes and collected as such?
A resolution providing for replacement cost, of cost and correcting certain nuisances on tax books as delinquent taxes and collected as such.
Move for adoption.
Mr. Stepp.
I don't have any amendments here.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposing? The motion carries seven zero. Thank you. entertain a motion?
Let me have it, John.
Mayor Reedus.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to, I meant to ask the chief, but she left, and, but I wanted to know, would you get an update for me on the cameras that the police department have? How many do we have?
Thirteen.
That's up and working?
Thirteen.
And, and also, I wanted to know if the council members can review the workings of those cameras.
The council members can, any person can take a look at the cameras over in the police department. They have a video console over there that will show you pictures from the cameras.
That is working at the prison?
That they are working, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes. Did we get a second to the motion? Moved and promptly second that we adjourn this meeting.